Hello, I'm Mark Els, Barnstable Town Manager, and this is my Town Manager Communication for November 1st through November 14th. First, we want to thank Ann Quirk, our Town Clerk, along with staff, poll workers, and volunteers who participated in the November 7th election. Your efforts are greatly appreciated. Thank you. We're proceeding with the Budget Action Calendar for FY '25. The Town Manager Calendar Year Fee Hearing was held at 11:00 a.m. on Tuesday, November 14th via Zoom. Please check the town website on the Town Manager webpage for notice and details. The proposed calendar year fees have been taken under advisement, and comments will be accepted through December 13, 2023. After December 13, the Town Manager will either approve the fees as proposed, reduce the proposed fees, or not approve the fees at all, leaving the current fees unchanged. And again, you can always find our budget information on our town webpage under Open Mark Milne, our Finance Director, and Lane Partridge, our Director of Assessing, will present the proposed tax levy shifting options for the fiscal year 2024 tax levy to the Town Council at the November 16 meeting. This includes an option to split the tax rate between the residential class of property and the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. This option allows for the shifting of a larger portion of the tax levy to the CIP class from the residential class. The presentation will also include an illustration of the tax levy and tax bill impacts from the adoption of a residential exemption. This option shifts the tax burden within the residential class from owners of moderately valued residential properties to the owners of vacation homes and higher value homes and residential properties not occupied by the owner, including apartments in vacant land. After presenting the tax levy shifting options at the November 16 meeting, we anticipate scheduling the votes on both these items on the November 7 Town Council Meeting. These votes are necessary to set the fiscal year 2024 tax rate and to issue the third and fourth quarter tax bills by December 31, 2023. Eversource Energy is proposing to modify electric infrastructure located in Bourne, Sandwich, and Barnstable. The following project changes would enable the operation of a previously approved transmission line between Bourne and Barnstable known as the Mid-Cape Reliability Project. The proposed project includes operating and interconnecting the lines between Bourne and Barnstable, expanding the West Barnstable substation for operation, and constructing a new switching station in Bourne. The Siting Board will conduct a public hearing where the public may participate and give input on the projects in hybrid format, allowing participation both in person and remotely, on Tuesday, November 14, 2023, beginning at 6:30. The in-person hearing location is the Tilden Arts Center at Cape Cod Community College. The link to the website is in my Town Manager Communication if you wish to see it, and we anticipate our legal staff attending the meeting and submitting comments relative to the project within the allowable timeframe that the Energy Facility Siting Board allows for comments on this proposed project. On November 7, I met with the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs Rebecca Tepper at her request. Barnstable is viewed as a leader in the Commonwealth on issues such as vulnerability preparedness and hazard mitigation planning. Secretary Tepper was seeking our input on coastal resiliency issues. The State Office of Coastal Zone Management, in partnership with the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Prepares, is developing a Resilience Coast Plan that will help guide coastal resilience policy in action as part of the 2023 Massachusetts Integrated State Hazard Mitigation and Climate Adaption Plan. It's now known as an acronym, but the Resilient Mass Plan. It's the Commonwealth's strategy for reducing risk and building resilience to natural hazards and local impacts of climate change. A key resilient mass commitment is for CZM to develop a coordinated, equitable, and effective coastal resilience strategy in partnership with coastal municipalities and other coastal stakeholders that will delineate geographic zones of climate vulnerability, identify climate resilient development standards and best practices for coastal adaptation, and develop management recommendations for these vulnerable areas. Barnstable was recently awarded a 2024 Coastal Resiliency Grant from the Commonwealth for design and permitting at Sandy Neck Beach Facility. Will keep you advised, but certainly the state of Massachusetts once again is looking to Barnstable to participate actively in the development of this plan. Following my Town Manager Communication, Kelly Colopy, our Communication Manager for the Department of Public Works, will provide an update on water resource management planning, including our comprehensive wastewater management plan. Following Ms. Colopy, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development, will provide an update on Massachusetts One Stop for Growth Award overview and associated initiatives. And then finally, Mark Milne, Director of Finance, will provide a review of the fiscal year 2024 tax levy allocation options. That concludes my Town Manager Update. Thank you.
Hello, Kelly Colopy, from the Town of Barnstable, Department of Public Works, and I will be walking you through this week's Water Resources update. First, we'll take a look at the Route 28 East Sewer Expansion Project, where the contractor currently continues to operate with two crews within the state highway. As previously reported, this work requires a single-direction detour of eastbound traffic, essentially traffic heading into Hyannis, and as construction crews continue to advance, you will see some modifications to the detour route. Most importantly this week, switching from utilizing Pitcher's Way to Lincoln Road. And that is because we are hitting a major milestone where sewer construction within Route 28 will actually be completed this week. Once sewer work is completed, the crews will be transitioning to water main installation. So we will still have a detour in place, but the footprint of the overall construction will be slightly minimized. So again, great milestone to see that the construction of sewer within 28 will be wrapping up, and then we will finish water main work before we head to remaining areas of the project. On the next slide, we'll take a look at anticipated active construction zones for Route 28 East. But before we do so, a quick update on the Finney's Lane Pump Station. If you've driven by the site recently, you'll see that a true building is coming to fruition there. Roofing continues, and our exterior walls are now complete. So as noted, here is a look at our anticipated work zones for the Route 28 East Project. Specifically, I've indicated Crew 1 and Crew 2, who will be transitioning to that water main installation work. Crew 1 is going to be located approximately in the vicinity of Founder's Court and the Harbor Church, and will be installing water main moving eastbound. And then Crew 2 is really truly right there in the intersection of Route 28 and Pitcher's Way. They will also be installing water main moving eastbound towards the DPW offices. Now, the mass stop permitted hours for construction, both sewer and water, are 8:15 a.m. to approximately 5:30 p.m. However, due to the proximity of major intersections, Crew 2 there, operating within the vicinity of Pitcher's Way and then moving towards Beers's Way, will actually be off the road by 3:00 p.m. daily. So in general, you'll still see work on 28 for the next several weeks, typically occurring between 8:15 and 5:00, 5:30, but you will see that second crew within the vicinity of Pitcher's Way heading off the road to allow for some easier traffic flow at the end of the day for specifically, you know, our school systems, our schools there. And so as I mentioned, we do still have some remaining work. So the Crew 1 and Crew 2 will be doing water main installation, but then you'll see we've got red there on Finney's Lane from approximately Teligun Trail to Aquacket Lane. That is remaining sewer work that needs to be completed. And then on West Main Street, pretty much to Strawberry Hill Road, again, remaining sewer work. So as the crews transition on 28 from sewer to water main installation, we'll see that work wrapping up right now, anticipated to wrap up sometime in early December, and then those crews will then transition to their respective locations on Finney's Lane and West Main Street. So more to come on the projections for the remaining sewer work, but again, great milestone that we are wrapping up work on 28 and anticipate having the crew completely off the state highway in the coming weeks. Next, we'll take a look at the Strawberry Hill Road Sewer Expansion Project. As previously reported, our riser construction began in early October. Since our last report, we are approximately 80% complete with sewer service risers. And again, those sewer service risers were being installed at particular properties identified along the project route, for the most part from Waquack and Route 28 South. All of that work is occurring in the public right-of-way, no roadway impacts aside from some single lane alternating traffic just to give the crews some buffer room to operate. And then we do still anticipate first connections into the newly expanded municipal sewer system this coming spring 2024. We've had some really great collaborative discussions with the Board of Health in preparation for these first connections, and as a result, we are finalizing our project communications and our homeowner's sewer connection guide. Restoration efforts along Finney's Lane are in progress. On the next slide, we'll take a look at projections for final restoration. As a reminder, restoration efforts are managed and essentially owned by Vineyard Wind as part of their host community agreement with the Town of Barnstable. This work requires single lane alternating traffic on Finney's Lane, and as I noted, we will take a look at projections for that work on the next slide. But before we do so, a quick update on the Strawberry Hill Road Sewer Pump Station. Generator and pump station testing has begun, and startup is in progress, so we look forward to getting that pump station online. And as promised, a look at paving restoration efforts along the Vineyard Wind and Strawberry Hill Road Sewer Expansion Project route. Final paving has begun. In green, you will see completed roadways, which now includes Attic's Lane, and then of course Pine Street, down to Craigville Beach Road, that Strawberry Hill Road section there, and then the remainder of Craigville Beach Road. In red is the work that's in progress, so essentially from Finney's Lane from Route 132 to Aquacket Lane. And I'd just like to take a moment to explain how these paving restoration efforts occur. It is a process that happens in stages. The first stage typically is your mill and overlay, then that is followed by a layering course from their structure adjustments, and that's actually the stage we're in right now. So mill and overlay and layering course has been completed along that red section of roadway. And then this week Vineyard Wind's team, or I should say their contractor, Lawrence Lynch, are working through structure adjustments, for example, adjusting sewer manholes before a final pave. Final paving will then occur next, and then your line striping, and that will wrap up restoration efforts from 132 to Aquacket Lane. In yellow, that remaining piece of the project route, essentially Route 28 Finney's Lane, I should say, from Route 28 to Pine Street, scheduling of restoration on that portion of the project route is in progress. A lot of that is dependent on us also wrapping up our projects, or I should say our construction on Route 28, and then also just the timing of when you're allowed to pave and when the paving plants are operational. So we'll have more details on that remaining small portion of the project route as schedules firm up. Now we'll take a look at additional projects as part of our CWMP sewer expansion that are currently in design, the first being the Centerville Village Sewer Expansion Project. As previously reported, we are still reviewing, or I should say completing, our sewer design plan review of our 75% design set. This also includes a review of the construction specifications. Our team is continuing their efforts to cite pump station locations and associated easement options. So right now, we are still looking at a late 2024, early 25 construction season for this project, and as we grow closer to that timeline, we will begin, or I should say resume, our public outreach efforts. As a reminder, myself and Town Engineer Griffin Bowden have previously hosted two public information sessions regarding this project last spring, both of which are available on the DPW pages within the town website, as well as on barnstablewaterresources.com. Now we'll look at the Route 28 West Sewer Expansion Project, which we've seen activity heating up a bit. We continue to work through preliminary design and survey efforts, most recently completing soil borings along various town roads, including Falmouth Road, Osterville West Barnstable Road, Bumps River Road, Oldham Road, and Old East Osterville Road. All of those soil borings and survey efforts will help inform our design of this sewer And additional projects currently in design include the Finney's Lane Neighborhood Project, which will effectively sewer the neighborhoods on the east and west side of Finney's Lane, building off of all of that sewer infrastructure installed as part of the Strawberry Hill Road Project. And then we also have the Old Craigville Road Neighborhoods Project, Old Yarmouth Road, and Shoot Flying Hill Road Projects, as well as Long Pond Area, Long Beach, and Great Marsh Road, all in various stages of preliminary design survey with funds associated with them. Most notably, I would say, would be the Old Craigville, Old Yarmouth Road, and our Shoot Flying Hill Road Projects. Those survey efforts are wrapping up. We anticipate final survey data being acquired by the end of this calendar year, and again, that will be used to inform our sewer designs for those various neighborhood projects. Now we'll shift over to the Water Pollution Control Facility, where work at our solids processing facility continues. All five blowers, which you'll see pictured in the right, which are essentially used for mixing our sledge tanks, have been replaced. So new blowers for mixing sledge tanks are now in place and operational. New grit pumps have been installed, and we continue to work through automation of the SCADA computer system, as well as some control work. Odor control systems are anticipated to be functional by the end of this calendar year, and then all told substantial project completion is anticipated for February 2024. So we continue to make great progress at the solids processing facility. Additionally, as previously reported, no major updates, but we continue to work through the preliminary design phase for the Nitrogen Removal and Headworks Improvements Project, and we anticipate that we'll move towards final design in the next few months. And then again, as previously reported, no major updates. We continue to work through the water reuse and disposable alternatives analysis with our contractor, CDM Smith, for the effluent disposal evaluation project. Lastly, we'll look at water quality. Water quality monitoring, specifically our cyanobacteria monitoring, has been completed for this season. A final test result for Parker Pond in Osterville did indicate existing cyanobacteria biomass, so we will keep a pet advisory in place throughout the winter for Parker Pond, Osterville. You can look for an updated water quality monitoring report on barnstablewaterresources.com, as well as an app notification to come on My Barnstable. Sampling will then resume in the spring of 2024. And lastly, we'd like to share an update on an exciting project in collaboration with the Association to Preserve Cape Cod, the APCC, as part of their Boat Ramps Project Program, specifically indicating Shubal Pond. We recently submitted a letter of support to the APCC for a grant to advance the Shubal Pond Boat Ramp Stormwater Improvements Project through design. So this is an exciting project where, in collaboration with APCC and other consultants and contractors, we'll actually be able to really take a firsthand look at improving stormwater management at this public boat ramp. We anticipate a public participation meeting to come this spring 2024, and we'll be sure to alert our public through media releases, app notifications, and social media once that meeting has been scheduled. And if you'd like to learn more about the APCC's Boat Ramps Project Program, we've left the link below to the APCC website, where you can learn more about the purpose of this program and why stormwater management at public boat ramps is so important to our water quality efforts. That concludes our Water Resources Update. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development, and thank you for this opportunity to update you on the latest round of Massachusetts One Stop for Growth Awards, as well as some of the other associated initiatives that are accomplishing projects in downtown Hyannis. So Massachusetts One Stop for Growth is the comprehensive grant-making process issued by the Economic Development and Housing Offices of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the Town of Barnstable was fortunate to be the recipient of a number of awards this year. The first two, which are on the Town Council agenda for grant acceptance, are a MassWorks grant in the amount of $1.8 million, and this MassWorks grant was awarded to accomplish a two-way conversion of the downtown transportation system in downtown Hyannis, fully designing and implementing the Great Streets Downtown Hyannis Plan. The second award that Barnstable received was from a new grant program from the Commonwealth this year, and that is the Housing Works Program. It's an infrastructure grant designed to support municipal infrastructure improvements in support of additional housing, and the Town of Barnstable was awarded $1,379,840 for sewer improvements on the west side of the downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone in support of a project that is being proposed by the Housing Assistance Corporation that will bring new homeownership housing to downtown Hyannis. The third grant that the Town of Barnstable was awarded was from the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative. This is actually a technical assistance award, where we will receive the benefit of consultant services from MDI, Mass Downtown Initiative. If you've been following the process to update zoning and design guidelines in downtown Hyannis, then you'll know that we've been working to align those two objectives together with our planning board and our historic district commission to make sure that we're accomplishing design goals for our community. This additional technical assistance will be to continue that design guideline process to develop historic signage guidelines for downtown Hyannis. The third technical assistance award granted, or the fourth award for technical assistance granted to the Town of Barnstable was from Mass Development through their Real Estate Technical Assistance Grant. This award was to study an initiative that we call District Improvement Financing. This is a tax incentive program that looks at the opportunity to capture incremental tax revenue from new growth coming from new development downtown and reinvesting it back in the district. So this $50,000 will be to hire a team to help look at the potential growth that will happen in downtown Hyannis from a tax perspective, and think about how potentially, if we set aside some of that additional revenue, how again, we could reinvest it back on the street in downtown Hyannis to further accomplish initiatives. So we look forward to continuing to keep the community engaged in this process and the council updated on this plan as we go along. The next awards, we're not through the One Stop for Growth, but we wanted to highlight again the comprehensive downtown revitalization strategy that we have that focuses not just on infrastructure or housing, but also focuses on our local and creative economy as well. Downtown Hyannis is a state-designated cultural district, and we are very pleased to be awarded $15,000 for each one of our two cultural districts, one of which is in Hyannis and one of which is in Barnstable Village, to continue to support the programming that happens, mostly by local artists and musicians, to enliven the public spaces in our community. And finally, we wanted to highlight a program that we have been running and just put a new application in for, together with our community partners. As you may know, the Town of Barnstable, as well as others, work in partnership with Mass Development on an initiative that we call the Transformative Development Initiative. Again, it really looks at a comprehensive approach to supporting economic development in our particular place, in this case focused around the east end of downtown Hyannis. So through that TDI program, there is funding available to meet the community needs that are identified by TDI partners. So we have a pending application in to recapitalize the downtown Hyannis Facade Improvement Grant Program. That request is for $125,000 through Mass Development, and it would make grants of up to $20,000 available to small businesses in the district for exterior improvements to help improve the appearance of their business and the street overall. This will be the second time we've run this program, or potentially run this program through TDI. It was first run in 2023, again, in partnership with other organizations in our community, and 21 businesses received grants as part of this program. So those are just, again, a few of the opportunities that we have been thankful for in the Town of Barnstable to receive from the Commonwealth that are supporting our Growth Incentive Zone Strategic Plan and the revitalization of downtown Hyannis. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Mark Milne, and I'm the Director of Finance for the Town of Barnstable. This Thursday evening before the Town Council, we are going to be reviewing with the councilors tax levy allocation options that they must consider every year in order for us to set our tax rate. There are two options available to the council every year to consider. One is known as the Split Tax Rate, which allows for a portion of the town's tax levy to be shifted from the residential class of property to the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. In addition, they've traditionally implemented a 20% residential exemption since fiscal year 2006, and this tax shifting option only affects the residential class, and it creates a higher tax rate, shifting a portion of that levy from homeowners with moderately valued properties to those that are for owners of rental properties, vacation homes, and higher valued homes. So how is our tax levy allocated? Well, it's based on the assessed valuation by class in the Town of Barnstable. Our residential class, which is valued at about $22 billion, represents almost 90% of our property tax base in town. These assessed values are updated annually and are based on calendar year 2022 sales data, which is the last full calendar year of sales data that we have available. And so these will not necessarily reflect today's market values as a result of the timing difference. So how did our assessed values change from the previous year? Our residential class, which continues to see a strong residential market in regards to the sales data from calendar year 2022, showed about a 13% increase across the town, or about $2.5 billion. Our commercial and industrial classes of property did not change in value significantly. Our personal property class increased $111 million, or almost 28%, and most of that is due to the infrastructure of the Vineyard Wind Project coming onto the tax rolls in calendar year 2024. So after we determine what the assessed valuations are, we then have to take our tax levy and allocate it amongst those valuations, and first we must determine what is our maximum allowable levy. The maximum allowable levy is the previous year's levy limit, which is increased by 2.5%, and then we can add in a factor for new property growth, and that gives us a levy limit of $143,609,000. And then a community is allowed to add any voter-approved debt exclusions or other special assessments, like our Cape Cod Commission Assessment, to that levy limit, and that ends up resulting in a maximum allowable levy for fiscal year 2024 of $145,995,000. Now, the tax levy that we used to balance our fiscal year 2024 budget was $145,205,000. So that leaves us with about almost $800,000 of excess taxing capacity that can be used in going forward and building our fiscal year 2025 budget. That tax levy of $145.2 million is about 3.2% more than fiscal year 23's tax levy. So that $145 million gets distributed amongst the four major classes of property based on their valuation, again, residential being about 90%. Again, residential being about ninety percent of our valuation in town. We'll pay about $130,481,000 of that tax levy. So how do we come up with the tax rate? We take that total tax levy of $145 million, divided by our assessed valuation of $24.5 billion, and multiply that by $100,000, or $1,000, to arrive at our tax rate of $5.92 for fiscal year 2004. That's about 51 cents less than what the tax rate was in fiscal year 2023. And that's a result of the overall property values increasing about 12%, while the tax levy only increased 3.2%. So that results in a drop in the tax rate. So here's a history of the tax levy allocation by class. The total levy has grown from $106 million to $145 million over this 10-year period, or about 36.12%. The portion that the residential properties have paid has increased over the same time period by 38.64%. And the CIP tax levy has increased only 7.2% over the same time period. And the reason why is that the residential valuations have increased significantly more than the CIP class of property, specifically over the last three-year period. As you can see from this table in fiscal year 21, the residential percentage of, of property in town made up about 87% of our total assessed valuation. That has grown to almost 90% in fiscal year 2024 as a result of a strong residential real estate market. So if we wanted both classes of property, residential and a CIP, to have incurred the same percentage increase in tax levy growth, we would have to shift about $2377,000 from the CIP class to the residential class, so that over this 10-year period, both would have realized a 36.12% increase in the levy, or an equal percentage increase in their share of paying for the tax levy. So how can a community do something like that? Well, this isn't a proposal, but this is just an illustration that shows how shifting the tax rate can accomplish that goal if that were the town council's tax policy. So in order to shift about $2.3 million from the CIP levy to the residential levy, so that those, the growth in the tax levy is equalized for both classes over that period of time, we would have to adopt a 1.15 shift, meaning that the tax rate for the CIP class would go up to $6.81 from that $5.92 previous calculation. And correspondingly, the residential rate would only drop to $5.82. And that's as a result of 90% of our taxable property being made up of residential property, results in only about a three-cent decline in the residential rate at these shift increments illustrated here in this table. While at those same shifts, the CIP rate increases almost 30 cents, because they only make up 10% of the tax taxable valuation. Here's an example of what those tax bills would look like under each one of those shift scenarios. Using the median residential value for fiscal year 24, which is $575,200, you can see the growth in the tax bill at each one of these shifts for the CIP class versus almost a straight line or slightly declining line for the residential class. And again, that's because the residential rate only drops three cents per shift, where the corresponding CIP rate increases 30 cents at each one of these shifts. The second option that the council will vote upon is whether or not to continue with a 20% residential exemption. Communities have the, are authorized to implement up to a 35% residential exemption if they choose to do so. And this applies, the homeowner must be the, it must be the primary residence of the homeowner for income tax filing purposes as of January 1, 2023, to qualify. This option only shifts taxes within the residential class and does not affect the CIP class of property owners. About 18 communities in fiscal year 23 adopted a residential exemption out of 351. You can see in the table on the right here who those communities are, a few of them being right here on Cape Cod and the islands. Barnstable has adopted a 20% residential exemption since 2006. This option reduces the taxable assessed value for each qualifying primary residence. We have about 11,630 qualifying properties. That number changes every day as sales transactions take place. When somebody sells a home, it immediately becomes disqualified for the residential exemption until the new homeowner recertifies. The result of this adoption would be a higher tax rate for the residential properties and a deduction from every qualified property's value before the tax is calculated at that higher tax rate. So here's how we calculate it. We take our total residential value, which is $22,37 million, and we divide it by the total number of residential parcels in town, which currently stands at 25,706. And that gives us an average residential value of $857,277. Using the adopted percentage for fiscal year 23 of 20%, that would result in a exemption value of $171,455, $455 for fiscal year 2024. Again, same, if we have 11,630 parcels eligible, that would exempt almost $2 billion of residential property from taxation. Well, when we exempt $2 billion of residential property from taxation, that drops the residential value that is subject to tax from $22 billion to $20 billion. We're still raising the same amount of tax levy from this class, which is $130,481,000. And that results, so that results in a higher tax rate than the CIP class of property. And it results in a $6.51 tax rate for the residential class. Here's an illustration, finally, here's an illustration of what the tax bill comparison would look like with a 20% residential exemption adopted. The blue bar illustrates what the tax bill would be for each one of these different valuations presented here if no exemption were adopted by the council. The orange bar represents what the tax bill would look like with a 20% residential exemption for a qualifying property. And the gray bar illustrates what a non-qualifying residential property would pay with a 20% residential exemption. You can see the difference between the blue bars and the orange bar are much greater at the lower-valued property. This tax levy shifting option is really a progressive type of tax shifting option that provides more tax relief to the lower-valued residential properties in town that qualify. As those values increase, you can see that tax benefit decreases until you get to the point of $1890,000, which is where there's a break even, whereby if there were no residential exemption and a 20% residential exemption, a homeowner with a home valued at $1890,000 would pay the same amount of tax. And if you see that the two valuations to the right of $1890,000 illustrate how even if the property qualifies for the residential exemption, they're going to pay a little bit more in property tax with a 20% residential exemption than they would if there were no residential exemption in place. However, it's still to their benefit to file for the residential exemption, because if they don't, then their tax bill is illustrated by the gray bar and those two examples, and they would pay $1,116 more than if they did file and qualified. That concludes my presentation. We'll have our Director of Assessing, Lane Partridge, before the town council on Thursday night, talking more about this, these two tax levy shifting options. We are not asking for a vote Thursday night, but providing this information for the town council's benefit so that they may have time to absorb it and approach either Lane or myself with any questions they may have in anticipation of votes to be taken at our December 7th town council meeting. Thank you.